November nineteenth, November nineteenth, for a board meeting, like a meeting order. And at this point in time, we're going to have the National Anthem and the pledge of allegiance led by Rob Russo and a Cub Scout, Pact Sixty-Six, AOL Dan. Come on down, guys. You're in charge. Okay, guys, keep going. Oh. Goodbye.
I'm the United States of America. Thank you, the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Thank you, Pact Sixty-Six. The hardest part will be getting the back. Thanks again, guys. Our number three invitation by Pastor Jonathan Sherat Sherat from the Kirk of Holly Springs. Welcome back from your long creek upping wherever it was.
Lake Junealuska, North Carolina.
Have a good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of town council. It's always a privilege to be able to start these meetings, help start these meetings with a word of prayer. And so may we go to God in prayer. Let us pray. Sovereign Lord, in this season of Thanksgiving, we give thanks to you. We give thanks this day, oh God, for the opportunity, the opportunity to govern ourselves and to elect leaders and to witness transition of leadership in our nation, in our communities. We are grateful, oh God, for that gift of freedom. God, we are grateful for our leaders and pray for their strength as they discern what is best for our community. We pray that you would guide them, strengthen them, and give them resolve in their work. We pray these things in the name of the God of all love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jonathan. And number four, adjustment pool to September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting agenda, Mayor Brooklyn.
A motion to adopt the November nineteenth, twenty nineteen, meeting with no changes.
Second. Motion made in second of favor.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passioned in, say thank you. Number five, the public comment period, no one has signed up, so open and close the public, the public comment period and go to. Item six A, under request and communication, Monarch Behavioral Health Urgent Care, Brian Maxi. And I thought this was something that would be interesting to a lot of people, including you. Hello, Brian. There you are. Come on and up to the podium, please. Speak into the mic.
Okay, here we go. Good. I was hoping I didn't answer the member on this. I don't want to talk too much. Good evening, everyone.
Into the mic, please.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Mayor Sears had invited me to come speak about some new services that are being provided in South Raleigh. I had the fortune of opening up a new behavioral health urgent care and a little bit about what we do. What we do is we see ages four and up, individuals who are experiencing a psychiatric emergency. And so what does a psychiatric emergency look like? That can look like a lot of things. In the community, it can be somebody that's experiencing suicidality. It could be somebody that's run out their medication and they know they're going to possibly be hospitalized or have some adverse consequences if they do not receive their medication. It's also an opportunity to assess the need for hospitalization or higher level of care that can be provided really in outpatient clinic. Who should really go somewhere else aside from the urgent care? It's a little bit easier place to start. So somebody who is essentially wanting to just start services, they've never really had mental health experiences before, no symptoms, never been on meds before, they can really start at one of our outpatient clinics. And we have five outpatient clinics in Wake County, one in Wake Forest, one in Sevlin, one here in the southern part of Wake County, in Q Quiberina, and then one in Cary and Navajo as well. Cary and Navajo are two larger clinics, and the three other in the county are county regional centers. And then the other side of the spectrum is individuals that are experiencing really severe psychiatric emergencies. So that's somebody we know is going to be hospitalized, having very clear psychosis. This is somebody that may be having a manic episode and has had prior hospitalizations. Imminent risk to themselves or others, again, that's somebody that is, has more than just suicidal thoughts. They actually have a plan. They have some means about going about that. Or if they need any kind of other medical or psychiatric stabilization that requires inpatient hospitalization. And typically, those are individuals that have had that experience prior, unfortunately. Some, some, the individuals that have had not, we do have licensed clinicians that are experienced in working with younger folks. Again, four and up is the age that we do see. What you need to note, walk-ins are welcome, no appointment is necessary. We're open Monday through Thursday, eight to eight, Friday, eight to three, and Saturday, eight to one. So we don't have twenty-four seven coverage right now. We do have a little bit extended hours, but it's, it's right now, we're trying to see and gauge what the community actually needs. We collaborate with local hospitals and other entities in the community. So if somebody comes in, they have a provider in the community, we make sure that we communicate as well as we know. Communication is very important in all the things that we do. It's really important for these folks because they oftentimes don't know their own histories. They don't know the medications they're on, they don't know their diagnoses. And so we're able to communicate with professionals on their end in a language that they understand. What we need to know about the person, we need to know about what medications they're on, any hospitalizations they might have had, any prior experiences that might be helpful in making an assessment and determining whether or not we're going to keep them there and treat them or whether or not we're going to move them on to another location. And when I say move them on to another location, I mean inpatient hospitalization for medical purposes, psychiatric purposes, or other kinds of substance issues. Where are we located? We're on three nineteen Chapin Oak, just down from the Wake County Contention Facility, if you're familiar with that part of South Raleigh, right in between the, I think that's the Hammond Road exit and the South Saunders exit. If you can say you know where the Bojangles and Dunkin' Donuts are, we're just up the road from there. The other things that, that I like to make sure that, that folks know is the, the individuals that are providing the service. We have LCSW social workers, we have PHM MPs, those are psychiatric nurse practitioners. They're nurse practitioners that have specific training regarding psychiatric, psychiatric illnesses. And we also have MB psychiatrists. So we have all levels of clinicians and folks that are able to really assess and determine what the best level of care is for. Any range of psychiatric emergencies and illnesses. And, and I don't just mean that has to be somebody that's having an emergency that we can see. We see anybody that walks through the door. If we assess them and determine they need outpatient care, we'll move them to an outpatient clinic. And we are able to treat them there. We can provide them with a diagnosis and an assessment and medication same day. And the appointments last about two to four hours. So are they short? No, but are they shorter than wait in the emergency room? Yes. And that's really what we're trying to do, is we're trying to move some individuals that are waiting long days in emergency room and seeing them in a setting that's more appropriate for social workers and psychiatrists that can do these things. Do you have any questions? We have a couple minutes.
Questions or comments from the board? Again, an update on something that I think is important. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item six B, request communication, Holly Springs Express Route Bus Service, Brett Martin and Dirk Seebrood. Brett, how are you? I'll see you tomorrow, Campo. Hello, Dirk.
Good evening, Town Council. Good evening, Mayor, and Dirk Seebrood, Engineering Department. Tonight, we would like to present Agenda Item Six B, Holly Springs Express Route Bus Service. The purpose of this presentation is to update Town Council on the forthcoming Holly Springs Bus Service. This presentation is split into two parts. Part one will be presented by Mr. Brett Martin of Campo, and then part two will be presented by me. So there will no, there will be no requested action.
Information.
Nothing. And, um, yep.
Welcome, Brett.
Hello, thank you for having me, Mayor Sears and members of the council. I'm Brett Martin, Wake Transit Program Manager with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I'm just here to provide some background context on how the Holly Springs Express Bus Service and, and other related services that will impact the Holly Springs market came to be, what governs the, the investments at a programmatic level, and how the service fits within the, the programmatic structure of Wake Transit Plan implementation. And then I'll turn it over to Dirk to talk a little bit more specifically about the route planning associated with the Holly Springs Express Service that is actually budgeted for this fiscal year, to begin this fiscal year. So just want to start with, back in twenty sixteen, the Wake Transit Plan and the governance structure attached to it was adopted. And if you remember, that was also when on the ballot countywide, there was a question to the taxpayers of whether or not they wanted to tax themselves a half percent to fund the expansion of, of public transportation throughout the county. And this plan involved four big moves. There were four big themes associated with this plan. And that big move, number two, you see is connect all Wake County communities. And so the plan made a promise that all communities would be connected to the urban core, which we see as being, you know, Raleigh and to an extent Cary. Before the Wake Transit Plan, you may recall, and even today, there are two communities, two municipalities in Wake County that are not connected, Rollsville and Holly Springs.
The two again?
Oh, the two that are not connected, Rollsville and Holly Springs. And right now, Holly Springs is the only one because Rollsville service started in October. So we're working on getting Holly Springs connected. Okay? So under that big move, one of the things to understand about the Wake Transit Plan was it was really just a financially constrained vision. It did not have any specific implementation details associated with it that told us, okay, with all these investments that we're going to have in place in ten years, how are we going to get there and the specifics associated with them? So for the bus network component of the Wake Transit Plan, there was a bus plan developed, the Wake Bus Plan, which finished up last year. And what this did is it, it laid out the strategic phasing of bus services over the ten-year period covered by the Wake Transit Plan as well as the supporting capital investments. And part of it also involved a project prioritization policy that identified that all Wake Transit communities would be connected by bus service, connected into the bus network by fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And so I'm happy to say that in the budgeting, in, in, in the, the Wake Transit Work Plan, which is, actually, let me go back. Well, we're fine. Each year, there is a, an adoption of the Wake Transit Work Plan. Mayor Sears is part of that because he sits on the Campo Board, so he reviews the work plan every year and, and, and takes part in its approval process. But that's the mechanism that we use to institutionalize annual investments that we're investing in with the, the, the sales tax and other funding sources. In the FY twenty adopted Wake Transit Work Plan, the Holly Springs Express, which was conceived in the bus plan, was budgeted. And what the work plan did is it set certain financial parameters, so there's a specific budget amount attached to the service. It identified the type of service that it would be, so it would be hourly service during peak periods. It also identified the alignment. Now, the alignment that you see in here is just the alignment that was originally conceived in the bus plan, and the alignment can change, and it has changed. Dirk will, Dirk will show you what that looks like when he gets to his part. It, it defined, okay, this is the frequency, here's the span, here's the assets that are going to be assigned to the service. And then also, it, beyond the Holly Springs Express, it also identified what services that may impact the Holly Springs travel market will be invested in. And that includes Route three eleven, which impacts the Holly Springs travel market to Research Triangle Park. That provides service into Apex. And then also, the Route three oh five, which is in existence today, would experience significant improvement, such that it would be an all-day service with thirty-minute peak frequency. That's expected to come online next year. But the services that we, the service change that we're looking at for the Holly Springs Express would be complementary to this service. So beyond just the service that we're looking at, we're also looking at the fact that there are capital investments needed. You have to provide access to the bus service. And so the Wake Transit Work Plan that was adopted for FY twenty envisioned and budgeted for a park and ride lot in Holly Springs, in which planning would start this year. We would identify a convenient location, there would be space for at least twenty-five vehicles based on the market that we're, we're looking to serve. And then also, for those other services that I talked about, there would be a new and updated park and ride in Apex to facilitate access to those, as well as an enhanced passenger transfer point in Apex that brings, it's a point that brings a number of services that need to interact with each other together, including the Holly Springs Express, the Route three oh five that I mentioned, and Route three eleven. So at this point, I'm, that's all I have, just kind of on the background context, the, the structure for how, you know, for the decision-making process and what set up the Holly Springs Express to, for Dirk and Go Cary, which is the agency that's been identified to operate the service, to begin their more specific route planning, to lay out the details of, of where it's going to go and at what points are the public going to be able to access it.
Questions of Brett or comments?
Yeah, just real, so if somebody wanted to go from Holly Springs to RTP, are they staying on that bus or just stopping in Apex? Or are they switching buses? Is that, what still has to be worked out or?
So that would be, that would, at this point, based on where the route planning is, that would require a transfer. At that transfer point that I mentioned in Apex, that brings the three eleven, three oh five, and the Holly Springs Express together. Because the three eleven is the route that goes on up into RTP.
So they would switch to the three eleven, okay.
Right.
So is the three eleven still on target to be completed within the next year or two?
So the three eleven is in operation today. Now, one of the things, and I, I might see if I can go back here. Well, I don't have one to click forever, but, so the three eleven is actually going to, the, the service for that, the frequency for that is going to be reduced a little bit based on what it is today, because the ridership on that service right now is not very strong. That's not to say that when some of these other transit services are connected to it and it's providing greater access to a, a, a larger travel market, that at some point it wouldn't justify, you know, going back to a higher frequency. But it's in existence today.
Yeah, so we were informed not so long ago that we were going to have service from Holly Springs to Apex to RTP. Is that still in the plans?
Not on a, not on a one-seat ride at this point. It would, it would require a transfer.
Okay. All right, so that's changed. Yeah, we were told.
With a transfer, yeah.
Okay.
Now, and, and one of the things to maybe set the context for, for Dirk, I'm going to talk to you more. There had, the route planning that has occurred to date has followed what was envisioned in the Wake Bus Plan. And through the route planning process, there have been some other alternatives identified that Campo staff, Go Triangle staff, which operates a lot of the service that interacts with the HSE, Go Cary staff, need to look at and investigate further to determine whether or not it provides better connectivity to the, to the employment markets that we need to connect Holly Springs to. But Dirk may get into that a little bit more when he talks about kind of where the town is at with the cooperation they have with Go Cary and the route planning process.
And I think the same answer is the three oh five Apex to Raleigh, same, is that the same answer in this case?
Right.
That's robust, but you could get to Raleigh from Apex from there.
Right, right. And, and one of the, the alternative, and that's a good question, the, the alternative that we're investigating further is, is more of a direct from Holly Springs to Raleigh versus a direct from Holly Springs to Cary.
And we have talked about that.
So.
Okay. Well, can I help?
Brett, when you discussed the, these transit opportunities, what was your, your ideal client? Like, what did you think? Who's that person riding the bus? Is it a student? Is it somebody going for a job? What, what is that criteria?
So this, this, this is a, the Holly Springs Express is a peak-period commuter-oriented, employment commuter-oriented service. That's how it's designed to be. So employment commuting, but also school commuting is something, you know, we, there are, let's, let's take Research Triangle Academy in RTP. It has students all over the triangle that commute there. Now that we have the youth Go Pass, which it allows anybody between twelve and eighteen to ride for free, it's an opportunity for them to access school, you know, using a transportation option that doesn't rely on their parents or, or their own vehicle to get them there. But this, generally, the market for this is employment commuting or school commuting, peak-period commuting.
So how long, if somebody is working in downtown Raleigh, what is that length of commute that you envision from Holly Springs to, to Raleigh?
I, if I remember correctly, so Kevin Wyrock is here from town of Cary, and he's involved in the route planning process. Can you answer that?
Thirty-five to ninety days in short maybe?
One way for.
And, and because of that length of time, that's why we're investigating this other alternative to provide a more direct connection because it's, you know.
Yeah, that, if, if the criteria is we expect ten people to meet for something, I think that would be tough to get. I don't know what the, the success criteria is for such line. The, the needs I've heard mostly are from students that want to go from here to say Wake Tech or interstate and seniors as well to go to major shopping areas. So that's more than what I've heard in employment, but that's maybe, I need to do some more work with him, that he also is looking to take that transit. But that's definitely the need I've heard.
Anything else for Dirk? Hi Dirk. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you. You can always go back and then, or additional questions to Campo and Go Cary after I'm done, because then you have to get the whole picture and you can all chime in and, and answer questions. So thank you again, Brett, for your presentation. So as Brett has already mentioned, the Holly Springs Express Service will add transit service from Holly Springs to Apex, Cary, and beyond, which includes Raleigh and RTP like we have just talked about. This bus service was already a part of the town's CTP early on and was part of, of our transit plan. And we're very excited that this is actually happening now. Go Cary would run the service, would provide the buses and, and, so this slide shows like a typical, that's, that is, picture on the right, this is actually an existing bus stop that is already located in the Cary, in Holly Springs Town Center. And so we have the facility already there, one bus stop. But in addition to that, we would also receive a one-time payment of fifty-five thousand dollars for capital improvements and sixteen thousand dollars in annual payment for park and ride leasing costs. Again, this is financed through the one, have sent tax increase that Brett had mentioned, and it's supported by the Wake County Transit Plan. And in addition to that, any additional signage for the third bus stop location, and I get to that in the next slide, would be required of town funds. So this is, I think, the core of the, my part of the presentation showing the map of, the overview of the route. So just to show you, the existing bus shelter location is located right here. And future considerations or locations for future considerations are in the South Main area or along Main Street. And so just to go by the pact, so again, we were looking at a weekday peak service between Holly Springs, Apex, and Cary. We would have three morning round trips and three afternoon round trips. The initial service start will be in early twenty twenty with one bus stop, which would be serving the existing bus shelter in the Holly Springs Town Center. And right now, the town is exploring to add two additional bus stops later in twenty twenty, which one being in the South Main area and one along Main Street. It would complete my part of the presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Question I had was, when are we going to see scheduling? And if so, how is that going to be, how scheduled in the bus stop areas or how does that work? So people know if the times and all that kind of stuff, or how's that going to be communicated?
We would, we would work with, with Go Cary to, to have events, to, to publish the, this is the bus route schedule. Probably looking at one or two events. We're going to look, use social media to, to publish that as well. But we, right now, we're talking about to using this one bus stop location and really go start this early in twenty twenty, which is two months, less than two months. And we will, we will, before the service begins, we will give more updates through social media and through Town Council media briefing. So you will be kept in the loop. Brett, do you have any other tools that we will use?
Yeah, we just say, yeah, the schedule, we saw on the plan. I thought I was loud enough about this.
You're on TP.
A draft schedule has been developed by Go Cary staff, which would be operating the service. It's not ready to be, to, to publish just yet because there's still some options, different alternatives for direction and where they're going to go and, and how they're going to interact with some of these sites that, that Dirk mentioned where the bus would stop. But preliminarily, that's been developed, and once it's, once these, you know, how the bus is going to interact with these sites is settled, then a schedule can be finalized. And, and that's, again, just for, for, for this alternative that you saw that expresses to Cary.
I understand.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I'm still trying to figure out, so what surveys or what analysis did you do that these were the ideal routes for these times, for these locations, that you did to, to come up with this plan?
The one bus stop in, primarily, you're talking about the locations, how we would come up with that.
Well, I guess I'm trying to see, how are we going to be successful? Because I, we want a successful program. So how will we measure that and what do we expect?
That is, that can be part of the outreach to, to determine the locations. So like, obviously, the first location. So like, obviously, the first location is already existing, so that's a big plus. And we think it's a, it's a good location. And then the other tools, we could have outreach events and, and like you said, you talked about the potential ridership that you got some feedback for or from, that we can take into consideration actually picking these locations. We'd be open to dialogue to see what would be the best location, what would serve us best. So we would always go back to this, this first one location and start from there.
Mayor and Council, if you could add a little bit to the comments. The, as it relates to performance, a couple of areas that we certainly look at is one is ridership and on-time performance from that standpoint. And as well as from the location standpoint, maybe why that location was initially selected. There's only an existing bus stop at that spot that was constructed, I think that's what I'm saying, maybe in the development occurred. And so I think when, from the opportunity of already having a stop, that was, it felt like a good place to start from. I'm not sure if that answers your question, or if this is part of it.
Well, and I'm glad we're using something already built. I'm just looking to see where the, the demand is that we're supplying. Because this is going to cost money, even though it might not be our money. Is this a lost opportunity for, I do know that we have needs to go Holly Springs to Wake Taff for sure. Like, I know that. I don't know of folks that have been asking us to go from here to RTP. Because as I commute to RTP every day, what is RTP? I mean, it's not like one area. So I'm, I want this to be successful.
Right. I understand what you're saying. You don't want just in the next six months, I have just one rider here, one rider there, to say it didn't work. Are we really meeting the needs and the demands, what people need with this? What is the cost for an adult?
It's about two dollar fifty to go from Holly Springs to Cary, and then it was the same amount, a little bit less to go from Cary to Raleigh for one trip. But those rates would be lower if you would have like a month, yeah, a ticket.
Yes. And the designated parking for those who want to take the bus, where would you have that as an example, maybe, at this point?
Good question. So we just looked at the map. So these two, the existing bus shelter and the one in the Long Main Street would be a so-called hop-on locations that would, at this point, not have any dedicated park and ride spots. But we will look at the South Main area to identify or twenty-five parking spots for individuals that can really just leave their car there and then go and use a bus. And we, we don't want to be too specific to who we're going to approach, but we, we just, this, this presentation is just to, to, to say, we got one existing bus shelter here, and then we have, which is great, that we can use from day one. And then in addition to that, we have really the option to, to pick a good park and ride location somewhere in the South Main area, and then have another hop-on location along Main Street, maybe closer, like in the Village District, which would be ideal. So to answer your question, the park and ride facility, we hope to have in the South Main facility, and then two hop-on locations were shown here.
I think another comment would be this, that at Campo, we've been talking about this for a while. And I think it's a great start, but I think it's also open for a lot of tweaking as we go further down the road. So I'm just looking at this as a startup campaign, and certainly not one that's going to stay forever, regardless of what it is. But makes sense Brett? Okay. Other comments or questions? You good? Thank you Dirk, thank you Brett.
Thanks.
See you mañana. Thank you Cary. 10:30 AM, 6C, Interco, Requesting Communication, Transportation Bond Projects Update, Tim Athie Engineering. Hi Tim.
Good evening, Mayor Sears and Town Council. My name is Tim Athie. I'm the Transportation Engineer for the Town of Holly Springs. And tonight, I would like to give you all a brief update of our transportation bond projects. And I will not be requesting any actions tonight. So once again, we're looking at our green and our purple transportation bond map. A little background on this, a forty million dollar transportation bond referendum was passed by our citizens just over a year ago in November of 2018. This bond was for six, what we call, green bond projects. These green projects are town-driven, and they are 100% locally funded. And we have three purple projects. These are larger in scope and in scale, and these, we are seeking cost-sharing partnerships with entities such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation and/or private developments. So let's start with the green bond project. So first one is going to be the Main Street Right Turn Lane. Back in October, on the 24th, we held a public meeting, and at that meeting, we showed the public a very conceptual plan and layout of the project. And currently, we believe the beginning of construction for that project would be about the spring of 2021. Our next green project is the NC-55 bypass right turn lane. We have scheduled a public meeting for December 3rd for this project. This will be, again, a meeting where we show the public our basic alignment. And they can come in and see for themselves how it would affect them. And with this project, we're anticipating an estimated construction start off somewhere around the summer of 2021. Next green project is our Grigsby Avenue Improvement Project. And with this one, currently, we are still in negotiations with our selected consultant. So we're hoping to wrap that up soon. Construction for this project, we're estimating to begin during the spring of 2022. Then our next green project is the Avant Ferry Road Realignment. Currently, and you may have seen crews out along Avant Ferry already, but there are survey crews out. And the next step after the survey is taken and the information is collected, they will, the consultant will start up on our construction plans. So construction for the Avant Ferry Road Realignment Project is anticipated to begin somewhere around the summer of 2022. Next is the Estes Lane Connection, and this, along with Grigsby, we are currently negotiating contract with our design consultant. So we're looking at a construction start date approximately in the spring of 2022. And then the final green transportation bond project is our Holly Springs Road Lighting Phase Two. We are looking to hold our public meeting sometime in the winter of 2020. And again, that's going to be where we show the public the alignment, and they can get somewhat of an idea of how that will impact themselves, their property, or what have you. Estimated construction for this project is looking to be somewhere around the summer of 2021. So let's look at our purple projects. Again, these are projects that we are seeking partnership, cost-sharing, if you will. The first project is the Sunset Lake Road Project, and that goes from Stevenson to Holly Springs Road. Next will be our, and this order is irrelevant, it's just the order I put them in. Holly Springs Road Phase Three, and that's from the bypass to Main Street. And then next is the NC-55 bypass right turn lane, which will be from Holly Springs Road to Avant Ferry. And again, with the purple projects, currently, we're seeking LAP grants. We anticipate hearing from Campo sometime January, February of next year. So really, two to three months, we're hoping to get good news. And again, another partnership as far as the cost sharing with the purple projects will be a developer's fee and move. So what are our next steps with these projects? The Main Street Right Turn Lane, we anticipate bringing the early design to Town Council sometime winter 2019, which basically means next month. For the 55 bypass right turn lane, again, we look to bring the early design plans to sometime in the winter of 2020. So we're looking probably January, February. Grigsby Avenue, we're hoping to start off survey sometime within the winter of 2020. And again, that's one of the projects where we're trying to negotiate a contract. Avant Ferry Road Realignment, we're looking to have our early plans drawn up sometime in the spring of 2020. And that's the project where you might be seeing survey crews out right now. Estes Lane, again, that's another project where we're negotiating with our design consultant. So we're hoping we'll have a survey by the winter of 2020. And then with the Holly Springs Road Lighting Phase Two, we're looking to have a public meeting winter of 2020. And shortly after that, we're hoping to bring these early design drawings to let the council view. And again, with our purple projects, one thing we have to understand is we're seeking funds in those partnerships. So those are, if I could go back, they're not really on the schedule, they're not ready yet. There we go. This is, this is the purple project schedule. Really, we're looking 2023 or beyond where we may start seeing construction. But again, we're, we have to get those funds first. We have to secure those. So at this point, I'm taking questions.
Questions or comments to Tim?
Got a lot of projects going on. Which definitely is needed. Also, the existing projects that are going on, Sportsmanship Way, Avant Ferry. So kudos to the staff that are, I know the public wants to see this happen overnight, but it takes time. And thank you for showing us and informing the public that it does take time. But we are working at it to help the infrastructure here. So appreciate that.
Well, we do appreciate that, but we want you all to know that we will sacrifice time for the best product we can give the town.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I want to applaud you on that map. I think that's very informative and something I hope that you'll put on the website. The only thing I would add is maybe add the ongoing projects we have now and the timeline they're on. Because I think people don't necessarily think of just the transportation bond, they just think construction. So I think that would be helpful somewhere, so everybody can see what's going on. I particularly hear folks think that these projects are just for roads, and if they include sidewalk projects and bicycle lanes, and that would be, would be great. But yeah, I think that map's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks. 10:00 AM, 7A, Public Hearing. Special Exception Use 19-SU-10-100 Calderon Place Family Child Care Home, and that would be Sean Ryan, Planning and Zoning.
Good evening, Council. Sean Ryan with the Department of Planning and Zoning. Tonight, this agenda item, you will consider a request for a family childcare home. Afterwards, we will conduct a quasi-judicial sworn testimony, a public hearing for the consideration of this use. Following that will be a motion to adopt the resolution. This project is located in the eastern part of our jurisdiction, over in the Sunset Oaks neighborhood, specifically 100 Calderon Place. A family childcare home is defined by North Carolina General Statutes. It is childcare that is received in a residence for no more than two, no less than two, but no more than nine children. So tonight, the applicant is proposing to have a family childcare facility for no more than five children, not including their own. In their findings of fact, they have limited drop-off from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. and pickup from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And our Unified Development Ordinance does not have any additional development requirements for family childcare homes, only that they obtain the special exception use and comply with all permitting requirements that may be required from the state. With that, I will invite our Planning Board Representative, Mr. Carfico, up to discuss the planning board discussion for this item.
Welcome, Marty. As Sean said, we talked about this with the planning board, one of the things we were concerned with was compliance once it's licensed and begins to operate, how would it be monitored? And we're told that it's sort of monitored, self-monitored in the state. Or if neighbors become concerned, there's too much traffic, things like that, they would make phone calls to the organization that does this, and that's the way it's monitored. We were talking about if the HOA was opposed or in favor to this, and the applicant that evening said that there was no opposition from their HOA. And we asked about additional need for maybe any propensity or more parking or anything like that, and they said none of that was required. So Sean indicated the vote was eight to zero to one, and one abstained because that person lives in that community and I believe is actually on the HOA there.
Okay. Any questions, if anyone's up? You good? Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else from Sean?
Yes, I would just like to reiterate that this is a public hearing. We will receive sworn testimony. This use is a special exception use because it gives the adjacent property owners the opportunity to come before the Town Council to present any testimony that they may have, either for or against the application, since it may impact their property.
Okay. At this point in time, we'll open the public hearing and like to call, and this is sworn testimony, as you said. Raven Floyd, who is the applicant, I think, am I correct? Please come forward. One or both? Okay. Welcome.
They're with me. I have a cold, so I'm trying to save my voice.
I'm with you. Put your mic down a little bit.
Is that better?
I'll do it.
Perfect. First, I want to start off with, this is a special exception permit. It is a little different than the way that it's stated. It does, the way that it's worded, it seems as if I'm opening a childcare center, and that is definitely not the case. The way that this came about is I was reported as having illegal operation of a business out of my home. I was contacted by the Town of Holly Springs. I immediately called the exact same day. I was asked if I was running childcare out of my home, which I replied immediately at that moment, and I said, I have three nephews that come to visit me while I am out on a one-to-possibly-two-year medical leave. And I, also, my daughter watches two kids. She's an eighteen-year-old senior in high school, and, well, she was going into her senior year. She watches two kids during the summer. So I have three family members that are, were coming, and two that my daughter was watching. Unfortunately, after a long process of reading the definition of childcare, it was determined that any children other than my own, whether it was my biological children, by marriage or by adoption, whom I also have a foster daughter, which is not legally adopted, she is through the foster care system, is counted towards one of the two children. So therefore, if any other family member was to come over to visit my kids or to visit in general, that would max me out of my two limit. So therefore, the Town of Holly Springs has helped me in this long process of trying to make sure that I am compliant with getting a license in order to be able to do so. At the time, I immediately said, well, you know, my daughter watching the two children, that's not an issue. We can figure something else out, and the parents will just have to be, you know, let them know that they're going to have to find some other care. Unfortunately, at that point, I was left with, I would still be out of what the Town of Holly Springs considered the two, the two children limit. Right. Originally, the permit was put in for, we originally had put the permit in for eight kids, per recommendation from the Town of Holly Springs, only just to make sure that if there was ever a birthday party, or if there was ever anything that was going to happen at my residence, we wouldn't become over our limit of how many kids that we were allowed to have. During that process, after looking into it, that would require me to have a built-in in-home fire. in-home fire, fire extinguisher system put into my home, which we were never in, we were never even wanting to have eight to nine kids in the home. That was just a safe zone. So we brought the limit down to five, which was the original five that have, that has been at my residence, that has been coming to my residence. Per this, during this process, the one thing that has come up, that has been brought up to my attention, was the traffic or the parking, not really necessarily the traffic, it was more of the parking. But before we even get to the parking, unfortunately, with the way that our driveway sits, and due to the fact that we have four vehicles, even though we have a large driveway, we are only able to fit three safely in our driveway, so we would have to park one on the road. Before this childcare situation came up, unfortunately, I had the police knock at my door, and there was complaint about my, one of my vehicles parked on the road. And if you go back to the map of how my, how my house lays out, we have a main road, and then we have the road, I'm on a corner lot, we have the road where it is in our cul-de-sac. I only have a short amount of space in front of my house, which is not on the main road to park the car. However, that was a little bit close to the stop sign. My only other option was to park it on the main road, which would then impede traffic. So in the process of trying to fix that, unfortunately, our car was involved with a small fender bender while it was parked, not a big deal. It was an accident, nothing to be concerned about. So between the accident, between the police coming about our car being parked too close to the stop sign, and now with the childcare also coming to my attention that it was reported that the main concern was the, the, the parked, the parked vehicles on my road while the kids were being dropped off and picked up, we have then in replace added a extension to our driveway. It is now a five-car driveway, which we went through the permit, we went through the process of having it inspected, so on and so forth, which I have all the documentations for that as well. Yes, one of the first things that we also did, once this came to our attention, is contact our HOA as well. I wanted to make sure that we were compliant with everything that we were doing. This is not a commercial business, this is not what it sounds, what it makes it sound to be. Also, during this process, I had the state return to my, or the police return to my house once again via the state, because evidently, the state was called next. They then, at that time, inspected my house. They went through every single bedroom, looked underneath every single bed I had, walked into every bathroom to make sure I was not hiding or bedding any kids in any closets or keeping any kids that were not legally mine to keep. They went through all documentation, they talked to all parents, they made sure that the ones that were family members of mine are, are family members. The state does not count the two, the three kids that are family, they do not count that towards the two kid limit. So therefore, I am in compliance with the state. They did recommend, considering I have now had the police at my house twice, and because of all of the issues that we ran into, go ahead and process, go ahead and go through the process of obtaining a license just to be on the safe side, so they don't have to come back to the house to do any more inspections. That's kind of where we are at tonight. I'm not really looking to open this extravagant business, so to say. I am out on a medical leave, I have a medical license, I have an office in Chapel Hill. This is not a long-term employment situation for myself. This is something that I was doing out of the kindness of my heart, and honestly, at this point, it has become a goal of mine to continue this, because I should not have to be bullied into stopping. I am here to help my family, I am here to help my friends, and the two children that I am keeping that are not relatives are schoolteacher children, which we all know are well underpaid. And honestly, they can't afford the type of daycare that's out there right now, and nor should they have to, because I have been bullied into having to stop. We have went through all of the responses that we have, that has been brought to our attention. Anything that has negatively come our way, we have fixed, including a $5,000 driveway. We have tried to do everything we possibly can in this situation, so I hope that after tonight, this will be a done deal.
Just any point. That's perhaps why the planning board makes eight zero one. We don't usually, never really do this, but does anybody have questions or comments? Because this is a very interesting issue, if you put it that way. At this point in time, the applicant, questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I think in this setting, you can ask questions.
That's right. You can cross-examine.
Sounds like an attorney speaking to me.
The first question I have is if you're receiving compensation for the children that you're watching in addition to your own?
Just the two.
The two.
Just the two that are not family.
The second question I have is, does your HOA permit in-home businesses within the neighborhood?
I believe that, and my husband can speak on that better than I can, we did get the documentation from the HOA, if you would like to read it, showing that what we are doing is in compliance with them. I believe that in-home businesses are not necessarily approved, but under a special exception with childcare, it's termed differently, just like this whole situation, it's not the same as me opening a commercial business out of my home.
From what I was told when I contacted the HOA, they said that there's nothing in the bylaws for the HOA that prohibit any in-home business.
Thanks.
Anything else?
You said your foster daughter is considered not part of the household, but one of the children?
One of the two, yes, ma'am. I actually went as further than that. My mother, who lives in Charleston, was, they were thinking of moving closer to the grandkids. We are a combined family of six, including my foster child. So we have quite a large family, which does generally cause a lot of traffic in itself. Don't get me wrong, I am not saying that we don't have a lot of traffic coming in and out of our house. However, my mother was actually contemplating on whether or not moving to this area, and I actually asked the Town of Holly Springs going through this process, I said, so technically, if more than two out of her six grandkids from me was visiting at her house, she would technically have to have the same special exception permit in order for all six to be at her house.
I just never heard, as far as the foster, I didn't think, and that's a Holly Springs?
That was per Holly Springs, yes, ma'am. Per the state, it was, it's the same wording for the definition, unfortunately, it's just interpreted a little different. But from my understanding, the special exception permit just kind of puts any question at ease, and it kind of coincides with the same definition.
Okay. That's even true in California. My, my son fostered two children, and then later adopted both. So I think it's a similar issue. Anything else?
Yes, Mrs. Floyd, how many cars drop off and pick up? Is it just two?
As of right now, well, during the summertime, there was more.
Sorry?
During the summer, when this started, in the early summer, there was more than there are now. There was a lot of, one of my nephews was being picked up for preschool and dropped back off, and, and there was a lot of going back and forth. But after the traffic, after I found out about the complaint about the traffic, it is now limited to four? Four? Four. There are four, four vehicles that are dropping off in the morning, and four that are picking up in the afternoon. That's at the max.
So I guess you have three nephews, right? You said?
They are technically cousins, but they call me aunt, so yes.
Cousins, okay. So three cousins, and then another child?
And then there are two, there are two children that are schoolteacher children that my, my daughter was watching during the summertime, who has stayed after the summer.
Okay, and that would be five, right? And then your adopted child, that would be six.
That is my, yes, that, but she lives with me, like my, my foster daughter lives with me, so she's not being dropped off or picked up. And, and two of the children are related, they are brothers.
Okay.
So they are, they, they carpool together.
Okay.
I hope that makes sense. If not, I can re-
Yeah, just trying to figure all the cars, you know, coming in front, so.
However, no one, everyone has been, everyone's been told after the, the parking spot has, or the driveway has been widened, that at no point in time should anybody be parking on the road going further.
So no one's parking there all day in front?
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. This is a matter of maybe 10 minutes, I mean, the ones that are, that are family members, sometime they'll stay. I mean, one stays the night occasionally, but for the most part, we try to, if it's during the, during the week, we try to in and out, so that way it doesn't impede on anyone else's residential time as far as them coming home from work or leaving, going, coming or going.
Counsel, what we're approving, does that go with this instance with these votes? Or does it convey with this property that moving forward, this property could be used in this, in this way?
It's a permit by the permit holder, so follow the property.
Okay. And I'm trying to keep track, so you have, you're getting compensation for two?
Correct.
And this permit will let you have other kids as well? So you'd consider up to five?
The permit is asking for five, and the only reason why we are asking for the five is because of the three family members, and then the two that I'm being compensated for. Because as of right now, the three family members are technically putting me out of compliance.
All right. But if they move away, this, this permit would let you have three more, so you could, at any given time, conceivably cut up to five?
Yes, ma'am.
And five people would be coming in and out?
Technically, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes? Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Call Eric Robbins, please. And please state your name and address, please.
I'm Eric Robbins. I'm at 212 Arbor Hill Lane, so down the street from the property. Good evening. Initially, I think I'd like to direct your attention to the application and the fact that the property, the facts that are stated on the application itself are, are not accurate. First of all, the size of the property is identified in the application as being three-quarters of any. According to the county records, it's 0.38 acres. So based on that gross misrepresentation, the application should be denied with prejudice. Additionally, I think the traffic is the biggest concern of mine. I live on the same street, and they're asking that the, the people come to drop off to children between 6:00 and 8:00 a.m., which is when my children are walking down the street in order to go to school, in order to go to the bus, and it's often dark. Even when it's not dark, and even on nights, we have about maybe four or five stop signs in our neighborhood, no one ever stops at this. I don't think we should be inviting traffic from people that have no vested interest in our neighborhood and the children of our neighborhood in. We have enough traffic as it is, we should actually be looking at ways of stopping other people, or asking people not to come into our neighborhood, not inviting them in. And I think that's something that's being overlooked. The issue of the driveway and that sort of things, I think they're all red herrings. And I think that what Ms. Kelly asked is actually one of the most important ones, is the fact that two are family members now, or three are family members now, the application doesn't, isn't restricted to that, so it could go as wide as five paying people. And whether or not she's making money from it or not is not relevant, because whether she paid a dollar, a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, that really doesn't make any difference. The reason why this is a special exception is because the zoning rules are there for a reason. This is a residential neighborhood. We should not be allowing for businesses that invite extra traffic and extra people in who really don't belong here. You want to open up a business, or a family care center, daycare center, whatever you want to call it, doesn't matter, there's more than enough empty spaces in the community and in the town where you can go do that. So I ask, I ask that you deny the application.
Same offer. I'm going to hang on a second. Same offer we made to the applicant. Questions or comments?
I was curious, have you spoken to your HOA board at all, or know what the conversation is around your neighborhood?
I contacted Ms. Ryback as being a member of, of our board, and she said that, that it's hearsay, so it's not quite relevant, but since you asked, I'll answer it. She said that there had, they have not applied or asked the HOA to approve it or not. So if, if, though I was led to believe, if the town approves it, then the HOA can have a, I guess, a second bite at the apple.
So when, when did you talk to her about that?
I think it was shortly before the, I think it was in October.
Okay.
Maybe late September, before the hearing was announced.
So the HOA doesn't have a set rule on?
I, I, I'm not sure. I mean, I'm not, I'm not really sure the, why, if the HOA rules should be particularly relevant to the town's decision, but I think that irrespective of the town's, of the town's decision, I'm sorry, irrespective of what the HOA has in its rules or not, I believe that this application should not be applied.
Okay. Okay? Thanks, sir. And last, Daniel Grevis, yes or no? Yes? It was optional. Please come forward, name and address, please, again.
Good evening, Daniel Grevis. I have more questions to the planning board. I wasn't intending on speaking, because I noticed on the screen up there, it said they recommended for approval, eight to nothing. So when I saw that, I was like, doesn't make any sense to come up here and speak. So I just wanted to know what efforts were monitoring the planning board did in their thought process, how much time they spent in the neighborhood, what resources did the police department or the planning board spend in the, in the neighborhood to monitor, or look at traffic, or make recommendations? And then, one of my questions I had was if the, I'm not familiar how this works, but if the planning board recommends it, they recommend it to the town council?
Correct.
And you vote on it?
Correct.
That's how this works?
That's right.
Okay. So I don't know if I'm allowed to ask the planning board what resources or time-
Technically, no, but we're breaking all the rules tonight, so I would ask, Arnie, if you'd like to come back up? I think that's legitimate. No, can't do it?
What this is, is you're, you're finding facts, and it's up to the speakers or the sworn testimony people to present you facts, not the other way around, unfortunately. So if you have facts to share about the factors that relate to the special exception permit, that the proposed use will not be injurious, or will be injurious to the public health, safety, and comfort of the community, moral standards, to the convenience of the general welfare, you could testify to that. The proposed use will not injure or adversely affect the adjacent area or property values therein, you could testify to that. The proposed use will be consistent with the character of the district land uses authorized therein in the Town of Holly Springs Comprehensive Plan, you could testify to that. The proposed use shall conform to all development standards of the applicable district, you could testify to that. And then access drives is the fifth factor, that access drives, the driveways are or will be sufficient in size and properly located to ensure automotive acceptance, safety, inconvenience, rapid flow, and control and access in case of a fire or other emergency. So those are the five things that you're looking to hear testimony on? We, you, you really can't compel the planning board, the planning board probably, I almost guarantee, did not go out and do investigatory actions. This process is set up for people to testify to those five things, and not ask the planning board to do so.
So we're not going to break the rules?
So can I ask if, in the future, if there was a violation, who would it be filed to? The planning board? And if so, the planning board, we're kind of, as a resident of Caldron Place, I mean, the-
To the planning department?
The homeowner who requested this special use permit, they didn't even have to take the microphone, because it said it's eight to nothing. So you win, kind of. And then I ask a common question, what work did the planning board, or the police department, or what did the planning board use to come up with their eight to nothing? I'm being silenced and saying, we don't have to tell you that. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
You could, you could talk as much as you can about the facts related to this case. You're not being, you're not being silenced. James, your first question, the planning department has zoning code enforcement, as a zoning code enforcement officer, so if there are issues relating to the use that are not, that violate a section of the UDO, and the homeowner that witnesses those violations can make a report to the planning department, and enforcement actions can be taken accordingly. But this process is set up for the town council to hear your testimony- But this process is set up for the town council to hear your testimony as to those five factors.
Thank you.
Counsel, am I like, would I be allowed when Mr. Ryan can step up to ask him a similar question? Is that, like, just to understand the process of how, you know, whether, how, if a complaint sells, something like that?
Sure, you can.
When we're out of the public?
Cross-examine anybody giving sworn testimony.
Okay.
So the only thing that, a question came up about the HOA. So I did call the HOA and they sent me, I guess when I moved in here in 2006, Brian Properties came before the planning board and the town board. And Brian Property said, this is what we think our neighborhood should be and consist of. And I invested in our neighborhood. And the homeowner association also, I'll give to whoever wants a copy of this, also said that, basically that if there's not an existing law on the books, well, then it would have to be changed within the bylaws for the declarations that Brian Properties put forward. So that was my understanding when I spoke with our HOA, I believe. We switched companies. It was, I think Heather Phoenix might have been the representative that I spoke to two weeks ago. And I just thought it, you know, I live on the neighborhood. I see it's eight, nothing. So, I mean, there's really a waste of time for me to even ask what needs to be done. So I guess that's...
Your voice is heard.
Thank you very much.
At this point in time, a post-public hearing, comments from the board?
I'd like to ask Ernie some questions, if I may.
And I'd like the plaintiffs to come back. I don't know if that could still be part of the testimony or not, or is it due? I would like to ask the plaintiffs some extra questions now. Or applicants, I don't think it's applicant.
Ernie, did, was there any residents attending the planning board meeting at all?
No, there were not. So we took this very seriously. There were nine of us on the board. We asked a lot of good questions. We delved into it very deeply. Unfortunately, we had no benefit of any public information. We knew that this was going to be a public hearing at this event. And so that's the way the planning board, as you all know, that's the way it works. We're advisory. We do the best that we can with the information that we get. We got no public feedback at all during our planning board meeting.
Did the applicant provide the additional parking that they were putting for?
Yes.
They did? And it was up the code?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ernie, was a question asked about the HOA support, whether they had reached out to their neighbors?
The question was asked, and we were advised by the applicant that there was no opposition from the APA or from the HOA. It wasn't really stated as if the HOA was approving or disapproving it, just that there was no opposition to it.
Other questions?
So John, if we have approved this and the HOA denies it, what happens?
They could be in violation of their covenants and the HOA can find them if they have the ability to do so. And the HOA can require them to stop if they don't get HOA approval. So, yeah, we are not allowed, we can't, HOA is a private contract between homeowner and all the other homeowners. And so we can't interfere or supersede in that contract. If your HOA says you can't have a pink house and we say we don't regulate color, then you still can't have a pink house.
Neil?
It doesn't sound like HOA's cut and dry. Like, I know in our neighborhood, it's cut and dry.
It's very specific. It's very, very specific, what you can and can't do.
Does that matter at all, counselor? I mean, what's the governing document here? Is it the HOA's covenants or is it our special exception use permit? If it's granted, then, and they're still in violation of their HOA covenants, that's really not a town that has to correct it.
That's correct.
HOA would enforce that by right with their member. And our permit being granted really has absolutely no effect on their ability to enforce their covenant.
That's correct.
I'd just like to know if, you know, if an HOA has any issue with this, that it doesn't come with this.
Well, when reading the application, it says on section, around the driveways, several board members have already approved this project. I would love the applicants to come up. Are they approving the driveway or approving, it seemed to say they were approving the daycare facility. But I'd like clarity on what exactly the HOA has told them we could do.
That would be a good cross-examination.
I'd like you to do that.
You can cross-examine.
Can I make a comment about the planning board? A general comment?
I can't stop people. In nineteen years, I haven't been able to stop people.
Yes, you have. It's been eighteen and a half years. Mr. Gravis brings up a good point about the implication that once the planning board says yea or nay, that's a rubber stamp. Well, I made a comment six years ago at a public meeting like this, saying that's quite not true. There isn't, there has been cases where the planning board has recommended something that we didn't approve. And I said, two times at least, a member of the planning board, six years ago, as Jerry said, free. So I just want to make the comment that it's not a rubber stamp, okay? If that was in place. What else?
I would like the applicant back. And can we go back into the public hearing comment? Could you enclose it?
We're open to the public hearing.
Could the applicant come back, please?
Two times at least. A member of the planning board, six years ago, as Jerry said, free. So I just want to make the comment that it's not a rubber stamp, okay? If that was in place. What else?
I would like the applicant back. And can we go back into the public hearing comment? Could you enclose it?
We're open to the public hearing.
Could the applicant come back, please? Hello. When I was reading this and you had said it sounded like the HOA was fine, but I wanted to really understand what you wrote here. You said that there were several board members have already approved this project. What does that mean in that sense?
I'm actually not sure what you're...
Is that number five?
It's number five of your application. It was just, okay.
Driveway?
Yes. Can you read it to us so we can all hear it?
From the HOA. And it says, per the covenant of Sunset Oaks, which I have attached, there is not a business restriction clause. Please let me know if you need anything further. And that was Calvin McLeod, community manager.
So does that mean that there is no other HOA rule that we're deciding whether this daycare goes or not? Is what that means? There is no other override? So it's on the chart now?
It's always good to know. And we, it's up to us in the end, but it's always good to know what an HOA says. But it doesn't sound like we're hearing anything on that.
Can I also say something, if you will? Just so, in this, I come up at the last meeting as far as whether or not there is a way to make sure that I was being compliant with the permit, if the permit was to go through. From my understanding from the last meeting, it was kind of a per basis of whether or not someone complained on me. However, like I stated earlier, the state recommended for me to go ahead and get licensed just to keep from any other further inspections of the way that it had to happen with the police, so on and so forth. I know that the town doesn't necessarily come out and inspect. I'm sure they could if they wanted to, but not like the state does. So this is just one stepping stone. My next stepping stone would be the state. The state then at that time, they do come out and do inspections. However, by me going through the licensing process, I don't have to worry about my children being sat on a couch while a police officer is there and they're wondering, why are we being searched in the manner that we were searched in? So the way that it's conducted is a little different, which is why they suggested for me to get the license next. So at that time, once I start the process with the state, which I have to, I have to have this permit in order to start the next step, once I have that next step started, they will conduct home safety inspections. They will see how many kids that I have. They will see if I have shop records on file. They will see whether or not their health is at risk for any safety violations if they are receiving nutritious meals. They go into a lot deeper of a investigation, so to say, than what this permit is asking for. So no, I'm not necessarily getting inspected to see if I'm complying with this permit. However, when the inspections do start, it's not just to see if I have the five. It's to see if I have the five and then so much more on top of that.
So putting the safety of the daycare aside, because I trust the state will do that. My interest in learning more is what are your neighbors saying? Because right now, I'm not getting a sense that if you went around the neighborhood or if you've had a neighborhood meeting, that you would get a lot of folks being excited about this or neutral.
Actually, it was two, two different sides. I did go around asking neighbors. And for the majority of everyone that I spoke with, actually, the only complaint that ever was brought to my attention was the parked traffic in front of my house. That was the only complaint that I received. Zero. That was the deciding factor. It was kind of the straw that broke the camel's back, if you will, on getting the driveway accomplished, whether this permit was accepted or not. However, with that being said, it was actually Halloween night as I was taking my kids around trick or treating. One of my neighbors stopped me and said, hey, I don't think you're aware, but we have a neighborhood Facebook page. And I want you to know that you have, you are a star on that neighborhood Facebook page.
I read it.
I got on. Needless to say, I was called many a things. One, I was referenced to opening a...
If this childcare was approved, then I guess the next step in the neighborhood would be to go to Crack House.
Yeah, Crack House, Disprint 3 was my next going project that I was going to accomplish. With that being said, I, at that point, asked to join said neighborhood Facebook page. And I put on that same page the depth, or the whole story on what I'm doing and why I'm doing it. And all, I mean, I laid out all of my business. I felt like I was just, you know, telling all. And with that, I honestly did not know what to expect, considering I heard so many hateful, very nasty things. And with that being said, I got numerous upon numerous upon numerous people saying, oh, my goodness, we need to learn a lesson from this. We need to start asking first before we automatically assume that something may be bad. So with that being said, yeah, I did get a lot of negative. Once I found out about the Facebook post, once I explained my situation and what this permit is actually for and my situation is a little different than I'm sure many childcare centers are, then in hindsight, I actually got way more approval than denial.
Were they your direct neighbors? I'm looking for if your direct neighbors in that are the ones supporting it.
All the direct neighbors. The only, the only negative comment that anyone said, most said they had no idea that anything was even going on in my home. That's what, that was the majority. The ones that said they saw some traffic in and out, they just asked about the parking. That was the only concern. Anything that was brought to my attention was the parking only. And like I said, that was, you know, the straw that broke the camel's back with the driveway.
I read the Facebook pages. I emphasize pages. My recollection, the record was that it was about 99% approval and 1% no.
Ms. Merrick?
I retract that if I can.
I do want to rein in the references to other people who are not here and opinions of other people and discussion about what other people said and particularly about Facebook. Because the system is set up to, we do an advertisement and we have this very formal process. And only in this room can you, under sworn testimony, can you accept factual information, competent and substantial factual information on those five factors.
Well, she brought it up, Counselor, so I thought I could.
Yes.
I'll retract it.
I'm sorry. I'm not here to try to cause any issues with my neighborhood, with any neighbors, with anybody in the town of Holly Springs. I honestly just don't. If I feel as if I'm doing something wrong, I would have stopped immediately. I'm here for any neighbors that have any issues, you know, like the parking became, you know, was brought to my attention. I didn't argue the point. I didn't try to come up with, you know, well, you know, you park here and you park here. I fixed this, you know, I fixed the issue at hand. If I know of any other issues that are relevant that I can fix, absolutely. My kids walk to the school bus, you know. If I thought in any way, shape or form that they were going to be in danger from the additional traffic that's in the neighborhood, I don't want my own kids at danger. I have a seven-year-old little boy that gets on a school bus that I have to monitor a school bus app right now just to make sure that he arrives to school and gets home from school. You know, I'm not this non-caring person that just wants to, you know, not listen to other people and their issues that they may have with this solution.
You had mentioned that this was somewhat temporary because you're on medical leave for the next year and a half, correct?
It is. If all goes well as planned, by next year, I should be back in my office.
Understand. So will its business continue as you go back to work? No? Okay. And John, how long is the permit for?
You can, by default, it would be as long as she was operating it. But you can set a sunset as well.
My plan is, once I'm off medical leave, I just don't know when that will be. But I have a very well-established medical office in Chapel Hill that I would like to return to eventually, if all goes as well as planned. However, we also, as my husband just stated, I'm on number five of surgeries since January of this year. So, and it was supposed to only be one. I can't say for sure, but yes, whenever I am cleared to obtain my office back, I will be back in my office.
Anything else?
Your application was dated in August. So I just wanted to clarify, the driveway expansion, has that been subsequently approved by the HOA? And is it constructed?
It's actually finished. I think that was part of what Ryan had, my husband, had wrote in that application. Was at the time that he wrote it, it was in the process of being approved. So that is what was mentioned about the majority had, at that time, has approved it. But since then, it's been approved and we got the permit. The inspectors came out as the driveway, as the rebar was put in the driveway. And the driveway is actually, the concrete is set at this time.
And anyone coming to or from the home for this purpose is utilizing the driveway for drop off and pickup now?
Absolutely. No cars parked on the road, even my own.
Thanks.
During the drop off and pickup, two of the cars on driveway line, I believe that's 6:30 in the morning, and my daughter, she was from high school, 6:30. So two of our cars are out of driveway. In fact, one in our driveway. I thought I might get back in nine hours. And we have teenagers there knocking on the door. And so when I get home, all cars are generally gone. And so that driveway house, if you really want to be good at it, probably five or six. And so there's only one car in that driveway during the day, during the hours, the drop off and pickup. That's all that's left.
One more thing, if you don't mind. One of the things that I forgot to mention was, during the process of finding out the term of childcare and what was permitted and what was prohibited, we also found out that as long as a child is not in my care for more than four hours, I am unlimited to the amount of kids that I can have in the house. So if this was a matter of trying to make this huge financial gain or to try to get around any type of permit or exception, I am legally allowed to have as many as I want in and out of the neighborhood and in and out of my home without this permit, as long as I do not have them at my home for more than four hours at a time. That is not what we are trying to do here. We're not trying to bring in a bunch of traffic. We're not trying to cause any problems. These are the same kids that were there in the beginning, before any of this permit was mentioned. It's not a rotating door where I'm trying to fill spots or to keep a maximum amount of number of kids. Even the permit of being five is well under the number that is allowed. I think it was eight or nine. I think it was eight or nine.
Good.
On the application, it does say three quarters of an acre. Seems to be a typo there.
I...
That was new to me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The lot size is point three eight.
I think we just went off of what we got.
Okay. So it's point three eight.
Is this in Monday through Friday?
Yes, ma'am.
And the, you said the times drop off six to eight AM and pick up four to seven? Nothing usually in between was?
During the summertime, it was a little chaotic. One of my nephews was being dropped off in the morning, then he was being picked up by a preschool worker, taken to preschool, then brought back from preschool. And then my cousin was coming to pick him up. There was a lot of in and out. And honestly, I kind of learned my lesson with that and we, we slowed things down and minimized it quite a bit. But as of right now and going forward, the only thing that I will be allowing is a drop off and pickup only, no more back and forth.
Okay. Good to left. Good right? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, we'll close the public hearing and ask Sean to come back and see if there's anything left to do.
Do you have any additional questions?
Any other comments?
Sean, is there any other businesses like this in Sunset Oaks?
Not that we were able to find in our history of this type of project. That was a discussion of the planning board. We went back through our permitting software. We found five in-home childcares that were approved since two thousand and nine. So it's not something that we do very frequently and none of them were in Sunset.
Do we keep track of if any of them are still active?
We do not keep track of if they are active. We, we do that with some of our permits. I've spoken with our zoning compliance folks because of this case and we will be going back and following up with the, the ones that we have contact information.
I kind of think there's probably many more that they're just not...
Other questions, Sean? Seeing none, we would like to tackle a motion. One way or the other.
Motion to adopt resolution nineteen dash thirty-three to make and accept the findings of fact for consideration of and to approve special exception use with the conditions stated in the packet.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, thank you, Sean. Thank you. Next. An easy one. Agenda item eight A, consent agenda, mayor pro temp.
Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passed unanimously. Agenda item nine A, major amendment to development plan oh six DP eleven A eleven Securus. Sean Ryan, Rachel Jones, and probably Bronwyn Berson. Hey, Sean, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration of a development plan amendment for a warehouse addition for Securus, which is located in the Holly Springs Business Park. Tonight, you will consider a waiver for a parking reduction as well as a motion on the amendment to the development plan. This property is located in the Holly Springs Business Park, the property highlighted in red on the screen, at four seven five Green Oaks Parkway. The major amendment is to allow for greater than twenty-five percent increase in the original approved town council footprint for this facility. They would like to add a forty thousand and sixty-five square foot building footprint addition for a warehouse addition just to the south end of the building highlighted in yellow on the screen. With this addition, sixteen additional parking spaces are required. The project has a previously approved parking reduction waiver to allow for a land bank future parking area. So the applicant is requesting to essentially amend that waiver and add the sixteen additional parking spaces to that land bank area located to the west of the facility. On the bottom of the screen, you can see the proposed building elevation. It does match the architectural, architectural pattern of the existing facility. At this point in time, I will invite Rachel Jones with our engineering department up to discuss some of the utilities and transportation aspects of this addition.
Evening.
Hi, Rachel.
Hello, Rachel Jones, Engineering Department. To give you an overview of the engineering components that were submitted with this amendment, with this development plan. There are no changes to existing utilities. The expansion will use existing services on site. There are no proposed transportation facility changes with the development plan. However, a trip generation letter was submitted that used a recent traffic count data collected in August twenty nineteen. This development plan is still within the parameters that were approved with the TIA for the overall site. And also within the proposed build out that was previously approved in the TIA, which was twenty twenty. The environmental components and ordinances standards will all be met with this development plan. Do you have any questions?
Question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
And at this time, I'll invite our planning board representative, Mr. Carpico, up to discuss the planning board discussion.
Get back on.
So we talked about, at the planning board, they had a trip, trip generation letter that was from August two thousand and nineteen. That was the previous one that we based this on. And even though they're adding a forty thousand square foot warehouse, they're only adding eight additional employees. So we voted unanimously nine to zero to approve this.
Questions? Good. Thank you.
This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for me. Otherwise, our applicant has prepared a presentation for you tonight.
I'll bring the applicant up or not? Yes?
Yep.
Should I say applicants? Again, name and address, please, each.
Kevin White, Greenwood Avenue, Raleigh.
Eddie Taylor, six two three, near Post Drive in Fuquay Brea.
So Sean did a great job sort of explaining what we're doing. We have a, a large expansion going on at the site currently to expand the facility and around the production that we're going to be providing to most of the world for flu vaccine. And as a part of that, we need to expand our warehousing to house the raw materials as well as the finished goods for transit. So you've seen sort of the picture there, that sort of expanding the, the south end of the site, about a forty-one thousand square foot addition to the property, to the house, like I said, with the raw materials and finished good vaccines that we'll be producing. Here's a sort of a, an elevation that we've now put together. It will not be yellow, it will be matching in the, as the gray, as the, as the short shows, the addition that we do up there. A cold room and an ambient space, so the cold room is where the finished goods, the ambient space is where the raw materials will be housed. Another look from two different viewpoints. And just from a schedule perspective, we're going through our planning now. Hopefully get our engineering approval in the next month and then start site work in January with intention to have completion by end of twenty twenty-one.
Do you remember the, the date of the groundbreaking?
Neither one of us were at the facility during the groundbreaking, no.
I was, you approached the desk, and I had to, I had to finish up behind Richard Burr. He didn't have a...
Whatever.
It was interesting, but thank you for your time. Any questions or comments?
I do have a couple of questions. As you hear, traffic is always something that we hear and talk about. With this additional warehouse space, are you anticipating a lot more trucks coming in and out and into the facility? And when will we probably be doing that?
We will be producing more, so there will be some additional traffic and we are going to, I, I don't know if it'll impact the timing, but we are going to a second shift as well to help with moving material in and out of the production areas into the warehouse. But it will not, that will not impact the, it'll be a still daily delivery of recent receipts. But I'm not sure of the amount of trucks, so it will...
So it, will that be during peak commuting time or daytime? That's the concern, is are we adding now eight, ten, twenty trucks during commuting time in that, in the roadless?
Yeah, I would just say that our normal receipt and pickups are during normal business hours. However, I cannot commit that there won't be any after hours. As you know, trucking services do run late and so on, but however, a majority of them will be during normal business hours.
Name and address, please.
Josh Ranky with Ramey Kemp and Associates, fifty-eight oh eight Farringdon Place, Raleigh, North Carolina. So we did do the trip generation letter for this project. And what we did is we looked at the peak periods, so the AM and PM peak periods, looked at the existing facility. And even though that was the minor increase in staff with this, we did look at projecting up the traffic based on a square footage. So the existing square footage, our data collected and projected that up. It was still well below the original TIA, which had, you know, recommendations and improvements associated with it. I think a hundred and eighty-three trips below in the peak AM and a hundred and forty-six. So even with this addition, it's still well below what was originally studied.
Other questions or comments? Good? Thank you, gentlemen. Sean, any follow-up? Okay. Ready for two motions.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact for consideration of and to approve the unified development ordinance waiver.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes unanimously number two.
Motion to approve major amendment to the development plan zero six DP eleven A eleven for Securus with conditions stated in the packet.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Agenda item nine V, new business, development plan A nineteen DP oh one A oh one, Holly Springs Long Term Care. Melissa Sigmund, planning and zoning, Rachel Jones, engineering.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So the purpose of this item this evening is to review the request for the major amendment to the development plan and associated waiver to allow additional parking on the site. The request action would then be to approve and overturn table that waiver and major amendment to the existing approved Holly Springs Long Term Care Development Plan. So as you can see, the site location, this was fairly recently approved back this summer, located just south of Ralph Stevens Road and to the east of Honeyberg Wilden and South Main Street. Into the site as was originally approved. As specified, the waiver request is to allow over, greater than one hundred and ten percent of the, of the parking allowed on the site, the required parking, as well to relocate trash enclosure. So you can see the parking that is being requested to be added is one additional row of parking on the far western edge of this site. It is adjacent to the vacant undeveloped lot that is located on the other kind of path of this original development parcel. And then the relocation of the trash enclosure from an area that was much closer to the building to a little bit farther away that they viewed as a more desirable location for the users of this facility. We'll note this was something that was originally asked by the planning board during the original approval process if there was sufficient parking provided. At that time, the applicant had, was providing the parking that was permitted under the, the development plan. At this time, now that they've gotten further in the process and evaluated their development a little bit more further, this is why they're requesting that additional parking. Thirty-three additional spaces for this use. They've provided a letter indicating similar types of facilities needing this additional parking for staff and visitors. And so that is the impetus for this request at this time. And the relocation of the trash enclosure done simultaneously, again, to improve the site facilities. There were no changes to the engineering with this proposal. And Steph has reviewed the request for compliance with all requirements and it does meet those minimum standards with the waiver approval. We can go through the planning board recommendation. Would you have Mr. Carpico, if you have any questions?
Oh, he's been patient, having to come up again.
Thank you. As Melissa said, we approved this back in the summertime. And the one item that we were most concerned about with the initial application was the adequacy of the amount of parking because of the large staff that works there and the coming of groins, patients coming in and out. So this coming back to us was like a win-win because we're getting more additional parking, so we endorsed it nine to zero.
Questions or comments, somebody? Thanks, sir.
Just one quick question. Could you just provide some more context to your discussion around landscaping buffer and aesthetics, just a little bit more about that?
Only that, Sean, I think Sean can actually speak to that better, but it's, it meets the current video standard. And so we, we didn't really lose anything to gain an additional rule parking and we still have an adequate buffer.
Thanks again.
So with that, I can take any questions you have. Otherwise, we can get information if you have any questions from the applicant.
Any here from the applicant?
I have some questions.
Sure. Again, for the record, names and addresses, please, into the mic. Welcome back.
Hi, Catherine McPherson with ESP Associates at twenty-two hundred Gateway Center Boulevard in Mooresville. Hi, um, yes, we came back to request the thirty-three additional parking spaces because the client, in the use of their other facilities, realizes that with their shift changes, there's overlap of people there. And they really wanted to come back in and, and ask for the waiver to the hundred and fifty percent. So we, um...
There you go.
There we go. Whoops.
You had it for me. Nope. Yep, nope. Rachel?
There we go. So we had already planned for the future parking in this area, so it had already been kind of reserved area and just been left in open space. So we added the thirty-three parking spaces along the western property line, with the new internal property line. And speaking to landscaping, we came in and it's a type, it's a very minor buffer and it just required trees. And we have come in and added shrubs along the parking to screen the headlights from the road. We also moved the dumpster to, closer to the entrance down at the southern side, away from the rear doors to the site. This allows for a more dedicated area for patient drop off and pickup by, you know, ambulance services or private services, as well as deliveries of goods and things to the, to the site. In addition, the client has added two electric vehicle charging stations at the front of the building and four carpool stations at the rear, at the rear entrance, which is where mainly the employees will be parking. Clients here as well, so we can ask, answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Welcome back. I recall some of the comments that I had back in June around the screening exactly in the location where you're now putting more parking. And my concerns stemmed around the fact... And my concern stemmed around the fact that the applicant is subdividing this parcel. And I think by doing that, the applicant's been afforded some leniency in what the intent of our ordinance is for the screening and the landscape buffer adjacent to Piney Grove Wilbon Road. And I heard you're adding some shrubs, but I'm concerned about the adequacy of how much that's really going to improve the screening along that stretch where the parking is being added. I had the same comment back in June, so I thought this would have been an opportunity to further that. Without the subdivision, if that parking was located along the road, the buffer requirement would be much denser and thicker like it is on Southern Crossroads Boulevard and also on Ralph Stevens Road. So I'm just curious if you have any comments to that or if there's any additional landscaping or screening that could be considered to make that thicker, considering the applicant doesn't have any intent to develop the other parcel at this time?
We don't have any plans right now for that parcel. The buffer will be provided, of course, when that parcel is developed along the road. We certainly can look at adding additional water along that side.
What else?
John White, Principal Long Term Care, 223 Highway 70 East, Carolina. To the, the question that was asked, so we don't have any immediate intent to develop that site. But one of the reasons why we asked for the additional parking is to protect that undeveloped lot, what we found at our last facility that we completed, very similar setup where we built a skilled nursing facility and didn't develop the adjacent site immediately, was that people, when, when the existing parking lot was overparked, people tended to go into that, that vacant site. So we're trying to actually preserve the, the appearance of that site by adding this parking to prevent that from happening. But in general, we're open to add an additional landscaping. This is a lead, lead registered project, so we're looking to build a green, sustainable building, so we'll likely have more than what's required in terms of landscaping.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it would be, it would be more genuine to include that as a plan condition or something of that nature to ensure that that's going to be done, at least in my own concern, to make sure that that happens. Because I am, you know, with, and is it still the intent that there is no, there is no desire right now to develop the adjacent parcel? Is that correct?
No immediate plans, no. I mean, it's a long-term goal to develop the adjacent parcel, but we don't have any immediate plans right now.
Is that for future expansion of this facility or a sale and development in some other capacity?
We would probably develop in a complimentary capacity, so something to complement the facility, but we don't have any plans to sell or hold or lease either way right now.
Thanks.
Anything else? Is he good? Thank you for coming. What else, Melissa?
You have a suggested motion.
Anything bad?
It would, it would be up to the council if you wish to modify that, the motion in relation to any landscape changes.
And if you do want to make a plan condition, we do need to get that in writing, their consent in writing, so you can make your motion subject to a receipt by town staff of a consent of some sort of additional plan condition for additional landscaping for future. We'd have to word it that way.
Want to tackle it, man?
Is that something we want to consider or am I the only one that feels that way?
I agree.
Thank everybody. No, I agree. Click, roll.
Okay.
So who else?
I will make the motion to approve waiver number 19 WAV 28, major amendment DP 19 DP 01 A 01 for Holly Springs Long Term Care with the conditions stated in the packet and the additional receipt of a condition for added landscaping on the Piney Grove Wilbon side of the project.
Second. Motion made, second all paper.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passing, Nancy, thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Gen item 9C, new business, Main Street Square, or Main Street sidewalk, north of Holly Springs, engineering project 15-01A. Dirk, you're back. Dirk Campbell, President.
Dirk, the Road Engineering Department is back. So tonight, I'd like to update the town council. Let me back up. The purpose is to update town council on this project and to ask for budget amendment approval. The requested action includes the motion to approve the budget amendment as it can be seen on the screen, a total of $329,500 of requested funds consists of $6,000 for the Duke Hall relocation, $312,500 for the actual sidewalk construction, and $11,000 for potential water line rerouting costs. The addition of this sidewalk will create a continuous pedestrian connection from the village district to the Ting Park Sports Complex. This project will be constructed by the Public Works Department. And also to mention is that one Duke utility pole will need to be removed, stored on site and reinstalled by Duke Energy personnel. Again, this is a good overview about this project. In total, it's 2,042 linear feet long, standard five feet side sidewalk. The project starts south of Oak Hall, the Oak Hall Neighborhood Entrance, and ends at the Ting Park Sports Complex in the north. So it might have been very.
Questions or comments? Is he good?
How long will it take to get the pole removed if this is approved?
Um, how long it would take to get the, that's a good question, Duke Energy. This will be the first item that we're going to tackle. If we get approved and, and we would approach Duke Energy, we hope to get this done within the next, a month or two.
Reason I'm asking is the block had some challenges with Duke Energy moving the pole to eight, nine months. Um, I'm just hoping that this wouldn't be the case, that we can get the sidewalks in way overdue. So I'm just wondering if you had any insight on if this would be approved?
It's just a light pole, so it's not like a power pole.
Okay.
I, I do see.
Shouldn't be that bad.
I'm sorry. But this would be like after tonight, I turn around and it gives the green light for Duke Energy to get this, um, the pipeline. And we, we, we're aware that this is a sensitive issue, especially Duke Energy to get this pole relocated. It's one of the first tasks that we have.
Just to add some information on that. Now, that pole was, you know, a regional connection, it was part of the double, it was a little large pole that you could come across. So it was much different than a full length pole that did happen relatively quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for Randy, because this is a fairly large project and they already did another sidewalk project on Sunset Lake Road. So what is, what is being, what aren't we getting with Public Works if they're working on this project? We have limited resources, right? And obviously more talent now that they're getting good at these sidewalk projects. But what, what does that mean somewhere else?
Good question. And I'm not sure that I would say there's anything that we're not getting, but I think it does require us to allocate some dedicated staff. We do have staff, a dedicated concrete work and this type of repair. Granted, this is a large project for that group and we're not staffed to do this on a regular basis. But these two recent sidewalk projects have been a high priority of council, we want to make sure to get that done. We've been able to use in-house resources to reduce our costs substantially and also get sure that we don't get in the situation of bidding on it. We don't have anybody been on the project. So yes, I think it's fair to say that there, there's some impact maybe other types of maintenance that we like to do generally around the town, but we feel right now that this is a good.
So is this a consideration during budget time to think about, you know, if this is successful and we're using our resources and it's less money, is there something we can do to, to enhance that so we can do more of these kind of projects?
That's certainly a possibility. And there was a, last year, the Public Works Director did note in their budget request for additional concrete crew resources. And so that's something that we're looking at.
If this is approved, the timeframe of when start to finish, any idea?
Let me look to Dirk, you're in, in that timeframe?
Yeah. I work at several projects we're doing currently, they were the town. When we last spoke to them, I think we were talking about, they're about two months out to beginning work. You know, so I'd say between two and four months to start work. And then, you know, if emergencies come up, back in those books, we pull off, not as quick, you hire a contractor and it could be. But I think those, you know, sacrifices are worth it on the sense that like projects have seen, you know, maybe like a half price cost compared to what we would expect from a contractor these days.
Can I request that we look to time this so at least it's done before baseball season starts in May?
We'll schedule that. We'll schedule that.
Okay.
I will add, I think, I don't know if I can speak for Mr. McNeil, but I think there's also a little bit of a, they're looking forward to this project as well. It is a big project, it's a little bit unique in terms of its size for our crew. But at the same time, we feel like we're equipped and up to the challenge.
Good.
Okay? Okay?
Any other questions? Seeing that, want to put a fact in motion? Very. One motion.
Motion to approve the budget amendment to transfer a total of $329,500 of unrestricted funds currently located in Parks and Rec deserves account 21 dash, or dot 95, with $265,424 to project account 48 dash 619 90 dot 04 and $64,076 to contingency 48 dash 619 82 dot 97.
Second.
Motion made, second all paper.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passing, Nancy, thank you. Thank you, Dirk. Thank you, Eric. Gen item 9D, new business, I-540 utility relocation, Towne Holly Springs Engineering Project, day 18 dash 001, Aaron Levitt, Engineering. You all warmed up?
All warmed up, ready to go. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Town Council, Aaron Levitt, Engineering Department. Uh, so the, the purpose of tonight is to give you an overview and a brief status on the complete 540 project and also ask you to consider approving the project budget. The requested action would be to approve the I-540 utility relocation project budget. So just a little bit of background, this is a highly anticipated regional connection. This project is also known as Complete 540. It will complete the 540 outer loop. Uh, if you would consider a clock with Raleigh at the center. We currently have highway on the top side from three to eight o'clock. And this would actually connect the eight o'clock to three. So all the way from Apex through Holly Springs, through Garner, and then Knightdale. The state has a estimate of $2.2 billion for the project. And it will be completed in two large phases. Some of those phases would have sub-phases. So anytime a big road like this comes through your municipality, there's going to be utility relocations necessary to complete the roadway construction. So I spoke about the two phases. We are included in phase one, which would go from Apex at 55 through Holly Springs, um, and then to Garner at I-40. It's roughly about 15 miles. And the way that phase is going to be completed is it's going to split it up into three projects. And each one of those projects is getting completed with a design build firm. And the goal is to open this section, phase one, to traffic in 2023. Now, the, the second phase is a little bit farther down the road, literally. And that is Garner to Knightdale, it's approximately 10 miles. And that is expected to be open to traffic in 29, 2029. So adding a little bit to the background, there is a North Carolina general statute that says if you have utilities in the DOT right of way, if you're a municipality, you're required to pay a certain percentage of the relocation costs of those utilities. Now, the percentage is based on your population of the last approved census. And in 2010, which is the census we're using, we were about 24,600 some. The next bracket was actually at 25,000 people. So by being a few hundred people short, we stayed in the 25% bracket instead of jumping up to 50%. So to thank you to those few hundred people that waited a few days to move there. So the screen talks a little bit about betterment and non-betterment costs. Just a brief description of those is, um, non-betterments are pretty much minimal improvements you need to make to continue utility service. So usually it's, it's lowering or raising a water line, uh, is basically what you're going to do. It really usually does not affect capacity of the utilities. And typically what you'll do in a better, a non-betterment situation is you put a sleeve underneath the road, a large stainless steel pipe, and you're able to feed the actual carrier pipe through that sleeve. In case there's a break, you can easily pull out the, the pipe without having to do destructive construction techniques and you can restore service quicker. Now, betterment projects are projects that are above and beyond maintaining existing utilities. These are strategic situations where the, the town can see an opportunity to maybe take advantage of the DOT costs that we're receiving. Obviously, they have a really large project, prices go down, we benefit from those prices. Throughout town, there's a few different spots, I'll show you on the next slide. We, we, we see the need to improve or expand capacity in the future by usually adding a parallel utility line, either water or sewer. And so we would just do that at this point, put a sleeve under the road in that location so that later on, we could take advantage of that sleeve, simplifies construction and costs a lot less. So this is a overview of the impact to the town. It's really localized to the northeast side of town. The, the double line running through here is the 540. This line right here is Sunset Lake Road, the road may be a little difficult to see. But so 540 will be crossing under Sunset Lake Road, two locations. And then the interchange would be at Holly Springs Road. And then we of course have the, the realigned Kill Dare Farm Road. So looking at the left, this blue line is a water line. This is a purely betterment project. Right now, we don't have a water line connection through this low point in town. We dead end both sides. So adding this connection would allow us to add redundancy to our water system, which kind of feeds into, you know, fixing breakages or outages, restoring service as quickly as possible. This would assist us with that. Down here, in the middle of the Wood Creek neighborhood, we have some water and sewer lines. These are non-betterment improvements, simply the, the water and sewer line need to be lowered quite a bit. On Sunset Lake Road, the second part of Sunset Lake Road, we're still working with DOT on a, an optimized design from the Holly Springs perspective. The original proposal from DOT was install a new pump station. And we would have to maintain that pump station in perpetuity. We'd like to look at an option that diverts flow throughout the town system and doesn't add a pump station. And we think we can achieve the same results with less cost. This green line is a, a mixture of betterment and non-betterment. It's a sewer line, it's existing. So lowering the existing sewer line is a non-betterment cost. But we're also going to parallel that with a sleeve because we know we could expand the capacity of that line in the future. And then over here at Holly Springs Road, we have some water line lowering, which is a non-betterment issue. So next steps moving forward, you know, today we're just asking you to approve a project budget. This project budget will allow us to finalize the design. Right now, we're going to work with one of the engineering firms we work with. Right now, we're going to work with one of the engineering firms we work with currently that has already performed a regional sewer study. And so a small project amendment to that would allow, uh, us to see if diverting the sewer flow through the town system would work. We're pretty sure it will. We may have to upgrade a pump station pump. But in the next few meetings, we'll probably be coming to you with the municipal agreement. So all the details of the work, um, that we've done over the last year and a half with DOT and their engineers, we have a municipal agreement in the range of six hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars, um, coming back to you for approval. Are there any questions?
I think one thirty-six point two seven point one also, currently from our, also applies to Ku Klai and Garner, uh, and Knightdale, I believe.
Yes, sir. I'm not sure. I think, I think Apex is in the, the higher bracket.
I'm not sure about Apex.
Well, they, they had some work, but, uh, yeah, they were, they were paying fifty percent.
Okay. Good. I mean, thank you. Anybody want to hit the motion? Any further questions?
Motion to approve proj- project budget and budget amendment of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars from the following sources for utility relocations associated with the I five forty extension project. Eighty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars from sewer reserves, five hundred and seventy-two thousand from water reserves.
Second.
Would you make a second all paper?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing Nancy, thank you. Item nine E, new business, update grant policies. Corey Peterson, finance and Linda McKinney, town clerk. I think.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. So the purpose of this presentation is on the updating the town policies and local civic nonprofit grants to better reflect authorized uses and best practices. The requested action is to adopt the two related policies. Some background. The first policy is the town council evaluation, uh, process which really establishes the process by which these nonprofit grants are evaluated. It was originally established in two thousand and four and amended in two thousand and eleven. The second policy pertains to the grant eligibility and rules and requirements to receive, uh, a nonprofit grant. It was established in two thousand and four and never amended. The major changes were based on feedback from the October workshop. We discussed, uh, this, these policies and the, uh, the process for the nonprofit grants. The first major change adds a pre-evaluation stage by staff, basically to ensure that only completed applications are considered. The second major change clarifies and simplifies the staff evaluation process and criteria. This is largely based on best practices and feedback from the workshop. The third adds ADA language to the requirements. This is another best practice we saw from other municipalities with similar type programs. And then the last change, uh, basically formulates the grant pro- the grant award process that is currently used by the town council subcommittee, which is largely matching and codifying the poli- the, uh, the policy to the kind of administrative process already in place. So it's just some, some clarifying, uh, language related to that. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer or, uh, my, uh, partner in this, uh, town clerk would be happy to.
Questions for Corey or Linda?
I have one quick question. I'm trying to, um, make sure that the groups apply to the ADA requirements. And so we have given Holly Springs and Alcaree Committee money in the past. I know that they have a walk in, uh, in January. So what would be a requirement they would need to add that they're not doing now to be compliant? I'm not sure what that, that language, what, what that adds to what they've done.
Sure. And, and in case like that, we'd refer to the, the town attorney to make sure we're not violating any kind of, uh, federal requirements.
So on the ADA, the way I read the policy was if you're going to, if, if we're going to give you money to do something like create a website or build something, then you have to, those things that we're giving you money for have to become ADA compliant. We're not saying if we're giving you twenty-five hundred dollars and you have a building, you gotta go rehab that building in order to accept our twenty-five hundred dollars. So it's, we're, you're not using the town grant fund to further your non-compliance of the ADA.
Okay. So it's pretty general and should not be a burden for some of the things that folks have done. That's all I was, I was looking to see if there's something. Okay.
This, this language that we, actually I believe we got this specific part from, uh, Raleigh. So this seems pretty standard language, um.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just a comment. I think, um, I'd, I'd like to make a recommendation that in twenty-five dot two, we consider making the council committee two members of the council rather than three. And the reason for that is, you know, my own belief in council committees is that you shouldn't have a majority of the members comprised on one committee to carry it. We've operated that way. I think, you know, in my review of the policies in the past, I don't think there was any indication of how many members were to be on there. But in the past, it's been two, it's been three, you know, throughout history. But I think now is an opportunity to really look at that and say, can we be consistent with, you know, other committees that we have, which are generally either a member and an alternate or two members? And if we move to a more structured committee, subcommittee structure on the council, I think not having a majority on, on all of those committees would be in our best interest. So I'd recommend that we, we change the wording in the policy from three council members to two.
Two.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay. I agree with that. Well. Good. Okay. Hit the motion, please.
I'll make the motion to adopt policy P zero two five dot two, council evaluation of local civic nonprofit grant applications as amended with my comments for a change of two council members, uh, from three to two, and policy P zero two six dot one, local civic nonprofit grant eligibility and rules.
Second.
Would you make a second all paper?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing Nancy, thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. Item ten A, unfinished business, the major amendment to development plan sixteen VP seventeen A oh two. Peterson Station, Peterson Station at Sunset Lake. Sean, you're back.
Uh, Sean Ryan with the Department of Planning and Zoning. The purpose of this agenda item is to continue discussions of the modifications to Peterson Station. And then before you tonight will be a motion for, uh, a resolution for waivers as well as a motion for approval of the development plan. Uh, just to reorient you to the site, uh, the project is located in the northeast part of Holly Springs, located at the corner of Stevenson Road and Sunset Lake Road. This was the proposed elevation for the corner of the building that was before the town council last month in October. And the applicant has proposed this as the change. This is the result of removing six units from the front of the building to provide a second level patio. It also pushes the corner back slightly. In order to make this feasible, the applicant has proposed, uh, maintaining the fourth floor on building four, adding seven additional units, which would bring the total number of units from three-ten to three-seventeen, as well as moving the amenity building closer to building one to open up additional open space on the interior of the project. With that, I will invite the applicant back up to, uh, discuss the changes that they have made to this project.
Sean, one question before the applicant and perhaps this is better answered by them, but I'm just trying to understand the math on the number of units that changed. When we're saying it's gone from three-ten to three-seventeen, we're removing six. So down to three oh four and then adding seven. I'm just, I'm just trying to put that together. Are we considering three hundred and eleven or three hundred and seventeen? Are they adding seven and relocating the six? So it's actually like thirteen?
So it's three hundred and seventeen total. So they're netting a gain of seven units. So they're removing six from the front. By adding the fourth floor back to building four, they're gaining twelve. And then they're getting another unit from a mailroom. So that's where the seven additional units come from. So they're losing six and they're gaining thirteen elsewhere on the site. So the, the net change is seven.
Okay, thanks.
Does that change the parking numbers?
They will need to provide additional parking, yes.
Other questions? Will the applicant please come forward? Once again, state your name and address, please. Our applicant.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. Laura Hallen with the Spalding Group. Sixteen eleven, James Franklin Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Um, I'm here, um, tonight and I'll be brief so you can hear directly from the applicant as they discuss, um, their reasoning for the changes. Um, but the things we heard, um, loud and clear, I think last time were, make more of an effort at the corner to energize, uh, that corner for the public and not just for apartments. So we've added, um, you know, back the second story terrace at the corner that was on the original plan. And the second thing we heard was, uh, the central open space and making sure that that was, um, adequate to handle, um, special events or just people that wanted to, to enjoy, uh, some green space, adjacent to, you know, restaurants or shops and, uh, things of that nature. So what we're doing is we're on the interior of the site, we're sliding that clubhouse, uh, to the right so that we can have a larger central open space there. So with that, I'll, uh, certainly defer to, uh, Jeff Peterson. He can certainly, um, answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, Jeff Peterson, one twenty-one, Morgan Fort Place, Cary, North Carolina. Uh, as Laura said, I appreciate you listening to us once again and we listened to your feedback loud and clear. I think we came up with a better project with, with your feedback. By reducing or removing those six units on the corner, it did make the corner a lot more inviting, I think. So, uh, and getting that terrace back there too, so it gave it more of a, more of a commercial feel. By doing that though, we asked for the additional units on the Stevenson roadside, which was the building number four. I think when you look at the elevations, it doesn't really show it on this, but it shows the buildings match now because the elevations will be at the same height on that Stevenson lake, or Stevenson roadside. Whereas now they would be, you know, stepped up or stepped down. That does give us seven additional units. I think we're actually zoned for like twenty more units, twenty-four additional units. We're not, we're just asking for that one, uh, one elevation or one floor more so we don't change the footprint at all. We did like the idea of sliding the building over, sliding the amenities package over to give us a lot more, uh, open space. So with those changes, I think we are, um, hoping that we've addressed the concerns of the council.
Questions? First, my understanding, the council has talked to you guys about this particular issue, you know?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So questions or comments from the council?
I'd like to thank you for, uh, sitting with us and listening to us. I think we're looking for projects in town where we want to work, uh, as win-win. And I think you've definitely tried to do that and I think what you have proposed definitely opens it up for that area. My only question is, is with this terrace, how do you see people getting up to that? Is that pretty open? They're easy for folks to figure that out?
It is going to be more for the residents on that terrace.
It's more for the residents? Okay.
Because there's, there's no real way to get the public up to the terrace. They can, the public can go straight through that open area. Right there into the main area, which is where, you know, most people are going to go anyway.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Personally, I like this rendition the best and I like it way better than the one we came here last time. So I actually think it was good to collaborate. So it works.
I do appreciate you coming and, and meeting with us additionally on this. I think we've got closer to, you know, where we were before. The only comment I'll, I'll have, and I think I talked about this a little bit, you know, before with you is, the last couple of times I've mentioned the emphasis on commercial and comprehensive plan versus residential. So by adding more units, we're kind of even departing farther away from that. I think how I'm getting comfortable is the aesthetics of having the same number of stories match this building so that it's kind of all one roof line along Stevenson Road when you get to the intersection and have now a more inviting, um, view than what was there before. So that's the only comment I have and, and again, I appreciate you working with us to, to try and find a solution on it.
Other comments or questions? Would you do it?
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Again, Sean, any further comments?
No comments from you.
What's that? All right. Any further discussion? Let's hit the motion. One and two, please.
Motion to adopt resolution, uh, number nineteen dash thirty-one to make and accept the findings of fact or consideration of and to approve unified development ordinance waivers.
Second.
Is it second? All fair.
Aye.
Close. Motion passing Nancy, thank you. Number two.
Motion to approve major amendment to development plan number sixteen dash TP dash seventeen dash A zero two for Peterson Station at Sunset Lake, but the conditions stated in the packet.
Second.
Would you make a second all paper?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing Nancy, thank you. Thank you, Corey. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this point in time, we'll go to item eleven, other business. I'll just do, do my quick crosswalk safety speech. Still progress. One thing I like to tell anybody and everybody that's, that's walking across a crossway. I still see some people standing back from the street about ten feet waiting for the cars to stop. It don't work that way. Either press the button or come to the edge of the road. And once you do that, I usually see the car stop. So I'll share that with you just a moment. Next meeting is December third. All those who were interested in seeing the changing of the guard etc. in the last meeting we have in our, our yearbook, um, come back and see us. Town managers report. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm thinking of something else, but that's fine. Go ahead. No, quite the opposite.
I just want to thank, uh, the Holly Springs, uh, Chamber of Commerce. This past Friday, they ha- held a, uh, a gala at, uh, for the great screens and giving, um, all the proceeds was going to the food cupboard. I don't know how much money was raised, but, uh, it was sold out. Obviously several people that are in the audience here were attended and, uh, it was a really, really good event. So really excited that, uh, all the money was given for our two, uh, food cupboard, so.
Good stuff. Good place.
Yep.
Other comments?
Is it my understanding, did we have another gas leak today? The same?
Yes, there was a, I don't know, a little gas leak that occurred late this afternoon, early evening. And I don't know if it's in my status on that, but it did need to be had.
Just wondering if it was the same contractor. Okay.
I know it was a, uh, great to be in Maple, because that was the same.
It was?
I had a couple.
Under control too, right, chief? Yes. Other questions or comments?
I wonder, I had some pretty heavy equipment go through my yards this week and, uh, I wonder if it's the same folks making some tracks, so. Um, I did, what, two items I want to talk about. One is to say that the tree advisory committee worked with the staff to go ahead with the tree, street tree replacement and, um, upgrade project, pilot project. And they've identified two streets that they've worked with the residents. They had some residents come last night. So that's definitely a pilot project. I appreciate the comments that council had and I encourage staff to kind of give us a heads up because I learned a lot at the tree advisory meeting and I would like, in, in the future with pilot programs to have more proactive communication. That would be great for all of us because I think we're all vested in, in how that goes. The other thing I wanted to add, um, I've been sharing information with council on the landfill and looking, trying to see when they're moving forward with the foam. I know that they did do one application of foam that took longer than expected, um, last week. And I have not heard again where that is. So Randy, if you can help us, um, get updates on when that's fully functioning. Because, um, there's still, I mean, I could smell the landfill this week. So we're, we're still having odor problems. And, um, also to stay up on them for the app, the app that we can use to, to report. So we could use some help there.
Other comments?
Uh, just two quick shout-outs from me. Perhaps everybody got the same email, I'm not sure. But, um, as an Eagle Scout, I just wanted to make, uh, two call-outs. One from a resident, Simon Tobak, who's a member of PAC, I think it was three fifty-six in Holly Springs, uh, who's working on a citizen and the community mayor badge reached out to inquire about a community issue, which is part of the requirements they have. And it was about crosswalks and all of those things. So, uh, perhaps everybody got that, but I gave him some feedback on what the town's doing and some things that they could do to enhance that in the community themselves. Uh, and then secondly, the PAC sixty-six, who was here tonight helping.
And then, secondly, to PAC sixty-six, who was here tonight helping us with the color presentation. They did a great job, and a family friend of mine, Nick Sesker, was a member of the Den that was here tonight, so a quick shout-out to him.
You're great, especially with the flag.
Yep.
That's a tough piece. What else?
I want to say a quick thanks to all the staff that were out there doing the rain barrel program. It was, I picked up my tube, and it was super smooth, saw a lot of familiar faces. And then, looking forward to getting them installed and having that kind of water for the, my yard and plants in springtime.
I'll get tips from you, I only got one. But it was cold, it was cold on Saturday, so, yeah, it was impressive.
Anything else? Apologize for not asking. I was not in a hurry, matter of fact, I wanted to spread this out until after nine-thirty. Because I have a very big net, someone that's going to be over by two. So, all right, Town Manager, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Member of the Council, I just have one item tonight, that is to recognize Linda McKinney, who recently completed the Municipal Clerk Corps of Government in Chapel Hill. So, Linda is now a certified municipal clerk, so we're going to recognize her.
How'd it go? Yay, Linda!
Working hard on that over the past year, so recently completed.
No, I want to say something else. For Linda. There are people who are can-do's and there are people who can't do. And in Linda's case, you've always been a can-do, and I want to appreciate that since now nine-thirty-one. Is there anything else, Town Manager, you'd like to speak to?
I have no more.
All right. Counselor, close session. It's nine-thirty-two. Air motion?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.